We tried, we did try to resurrect it. If you go on the, I think it's on the school website, there's a link to the Perry Morning News and Hartman Morning News. And the kids, the kids do a tremendous job. And I, they've also done transition videos, a lot like third grade going to fourth grade and fourth grade going to fifth grade. They've all put their own little videos together and they show it on the transition days. And they do a lot of P S S A fun announcement stuff. So Frank does a nice job because we're very.
So, so we're gonna do a back foot probe through each elementary school?
Yes.
Isn't the one for the high school? Or no, that's, Northside doesn't do announcements?
But we, they'll have the ability to do it if we can find somebody to do it. Or we'll have two departments of Frank and somebody else can work together to get them going.
Okay, taking that into consideration, I don't know how anybody else feels, but I, I think both of them should stay in.
So there's, that's second line, that, the Chromebook grant, is that the?
Okay, that's for the early adopters, for the teachers to ask for equipment after we've, after they feel comfortable enough to do it. You know, we may not have anybody ask for five Chromebooks from their room. But if they feel comfortable and they have something they feel they can really incorporate it correctly and integrate it the right way, then they can apply to the committee, say, could I have five Chromebooks or six Chromebooks from my room? And if nobody asks, we don't buy them.
So, is that what the fifty Chromebooks were, is that?
The Chromebooks range about two seventy-nine, between two seventy-nine and three hundred dollars is what a Chromebook runs.
To elaborate on those two numbers, Mr. Moreau, all I did was divide it up, the total thirty-four, thirty-five thousand between the two boxes. As opposed to specifically costing.
One eighteen, one sixteen.
So do we have enough interest in keeping those in?
I do.
Okay. And that's a point.
And again, these are things that are kind of like contingency.
Yes.
Like if, if they ask for it.
We will buy it.
Right. But we're not buying these upfront.
No.
Spending on the.
No, we're not doing that anymore.
Okay, for the next item, I, I have a question for the principals. John, you feel comfortable that we could get rid of the phase four and, where are you at? The three of you are comfortable being able to work those kids into our system and everything?
Yes, it's double.
Now, is this hundred thousand, Rich? Is that busing or is that just for phase four?
Thirty-six thousand.
So it would save us a hundred and thirty-six thousand?
Yeah, but I, I gotta be honest with you, I haven't taken the thirty-six thousand out for transportation because if, if anywhere that I want extra money, it's transportation, because all of a sudden I get one kid. And that money just evaporates. So, I mean, I have not pulled out the transportation money thinking I'm gonna probably need it somewhere else, depending on what happens next year.
And if we don't at the end of the year, all that would.
Goes back in.
Yeah, goes back in.
That's not necessarily, they're not necessarily coming back to our building.
No, it is a cyber program. But I mean, the kids' needs could be met, that between the three of you, those kids would not be left hanging.
We would find their graduation requirements that they need and put them online.
There's gonna be any, there's gonna be any extra work for anybody?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's part of what I do though anyways, so constant contact with that.
John, are those gonna need equipment?
So is everybody else in, 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 in to get rid of that?
The only thing you have to be cautious, we still have our slots at Cray. Cross our fingers, say we go on a run of expulsions, which we traditionally haven't. But they have to go somewhere and we all, we would just have to make the commitment as a, as a school, after those parents have thirty days to seek an alternate education, they come back to us, or we make agreements in most cases. Our agreement is size, that's our agreement, that's your option.
Well, they can choose private school.
Well, yeah, they have thirty days, correct?
It's very, it's very, I can think of it working.
Right.
Okay, that's what I was gonna do. Okay, I'm in agreement with taking that out. I don't know who's with me with it.
I am with you.
Okay. Oh, we just moved on down, ProSoft?
Yeah, run through the whole thing, if anybody's in, has any objections to any of it. Right.
Everybody, eliminate?
I mean, you wouldn't just do one school, I mean, you'd either consult or not make a prosoft for ProSoft.
Oh, ProSoft, you can't do one school, you have to do, it's district-wide.
Okay.
That's all out?
Yeah. I have a problem with getting rid of library books.
That's why I said keep them alive.
Why is Hartman getting reference books that nobody else is getting?
I believe we bought some just recently.
Okay, I knew Lincolnville, but I didn't know about Northside. I guess Northside, they really wouldn't be using it.
So those are all in, I hear.
Okay, and this one really confuses me. Eliminate half funding for A P payroll. How can we eliminate half the funding for A P and payroll?
Those are just specific laptop units. I have the accounts payable and the payroll persons, Alan probably can speak to them, they're on antiquated equipment. And we're at a point now where some of the banks and so forth we're dealing with are transitioning to different platforms.
These, these are all still running X P. Nobody's supporting X P anymore and they won't, they don't have enough memory of them to put Windows seven on them.
So that originally started out at sixty-eight hundred, just cut it back to thirty-four hundred to allow at least the accounts payable and payroll. And then what would be left, we would just try to use as best we could in the cafeteria.
Well, with, because I know we're upgrading our systems, which means you have to be upgraded to, to use it, right?
Right, and we've already been told that we're using X P, they're not gonna support it anymore.
Yeah, I just had a meeting today with it.
Yeah, so that actually needs to be increased to cover both the sixty-eight hundred.
Well.
Can we get by with half funding?
Well, I'm selfish, I'm worried about accounts payable and payroll, that's gonna be the first priority. And then after that, the cafeteria will have to deal with what the cafeteria has to deal with.
Oh, that was the one that you were explaining to us was where the parents could then put funds into their kids' account online without having the hassle?
That would be allowing us to do that with the upgraded machinery. So, yeah, we need the upgraded machinery to do that. The other thing, I guess maybe I did mention or didn't mention prior is that I will be in contact with Mets tomorrow. They had mentioned that they would basically loan us money, so to speak, on a five-year payback. So they put the equipment in and then, once a year, year, or throughout the year, we make a payment back. So we could replace some equipment that way. And so that's another option.
But you're talking thirty-four hundred dollars to get the equipment that we need to run cafeteria?
No, it's not gonna work, I mean, that's not gonna work.
No, that's just A P and payroll.
Okay, but they said it was double.
It was double, there was enough, there was enough for accounts payable, payroll and the cafeteria.
At sixty-eight hundred?
At sixty-eight and a half, that's all they're gonna do.
Right, so if we added another thirty-four, you could then have our own equipment, we wouldn't have to rent or borrow anybody's.
That's my understanding, yeah.
I, I don't know, I, I have not talked to Mets, the Mets people, but.
Okay, well, I mean, if the sixty-eight hundred would get us, then Mets would be able to assist us additionally.
And again, there's, I, with Mets coming in, that, that could change things because I, the, what Kathy was using is, oh, the main server for the cafeteria. Now, I don't know what Mets requirements are going to be for us to have in the cafeteria. So, you know, and again, it, it's a contingency, if, if it's there, we don't use it, that's fine, you know.
But we may actually get a little increase if there are actually parents that can go online and get the funds into the kids' accounts and monitor.
Is that, is that part of Mets? I don't.
Yeah, it's part of what we talked about in both. That's a separate, that's called My Lunch Money, I think anybody can use that. I've emailed them like four times, they've never emailed me back. My Lunch Money, it's called, it don't work with any system. It's a separate internet-based deposits money in your kid's account. They work with any, any company or anybody, it just, they never got back to me, so I don't know. If they had one, I don't know, I could screw that one out.
And I guess we have to hear if, if this new company has something that's better than that, but.
Yeah, but like Ellen just said, we can budget the sixty-eight like you suggested and if we don't use it, we don't use it.
It seems like that, we're trying to get our cafeteria in the, in the flash. It might actually help.
So, is everybody in on the sixty-eight? Mike?
I am.
Okay. Eliminate half funding for Hartman chair glides. What is that?
Their balls for the bottom of chairs, so it's not noisy.
Oh. I'm good for getting rid of that. Anybody else?
Well, let's, uh, do tennis teams.
Let's take all their balls.
Reuse their own balls.
No, yeah, we have tennis teams. They would look absolutely lovely. Okay, eliminate funds for check valve replacement. H V A C computer, Northside?
I can address that, I talked to Steve, those were items that, they're not a hundred percent necessary. I don't wanna go so far as to say nice to have, but it's something he feels that we can go another year or two without actually having to replace.
So whatever's cut down.
Cut it? Okay, eliminate the tile at Northside.
What are they gonna do in place?
It was, we were traveling halfway up the wall to keep the kids from gouging and we, we got the back entrance done, which was terrific. And the rest is just on hold. And I, I think that that's a, a reasonable.
So you're saying if it's okay to wait?
Yeah.
Well, I think originally we had eight thousand, is that right, Mr. Zrona?
I care if we call the specific number, but what I would have taken out of that original number, um, was just the tile portion.
Okay, eliminate funds for weekend building security. I don't really wanna eliminate that. We've already been broken into and if, unless there's some way to make the coaches responsible.
What are his hours? What are the hours for the?
They're seven, three and three to eleven, sixteen hours.
Ms. Pizzi, here's my only concern, I don't have any problem having the coaches responsible. It's not necessary to coaches though. The best example I can give to you is, not this past winter, so we had somebody in the building. Previous winter, it was a elementary sixth grade girls' basketball game on Saturday evening. Game starts, okay, so the coach is obviously involved in the game. A parent parked in the back lot. All the people came in the commentary that went initially to the game, this person parked in the back lot. Called somebody on their phone, seemed like got out of the stands, went to the back lot, propped the door open with a brick. Nobody goes out that door or whoever does go out that door doesn't shut it. Luckily, Mike Sinclair comes back from a, a late wrestling match at ten o'clock at night, the door's still propped open. So, okay, maybe it wasn't the coaches, maybe the coach didn't go around and check it after the game, but he was busy coaching the game when that happened.
That's my problem.
So that's, that's my biggest concern, it's not necessarily having a coach there for practice or whatever, it's, when then the game's starting, if there's nobody in the building and there's no custodians Saturday, zero custodians. So there's nobody but the coach. And this is a program that's sixth grade, fifth grade, that we don't as a district necessarily control. So, those are my concerns as the principal, me getting a call and, you know, I'm the principal, I understand, it's part of my job. At ten o'clock on a Saturday night, wondering why the door's propped open. I go back through the cameras and I say, oop, there's somebody at five-thirty going out and putting a brick in the door. I'm, you know, I'm not around to, to check that, obviously, nobody is.
See, that's my.
And I agree, and for this sixth grade coach.
That's on his job.
What are we supposed to do, have him check every door in school? Why are you even using that part of the bill?
No.
He's responsible for his kids and where he's used, he can't do that.
And like I said, maybe it's his responsibility after, as though he's cleaning up, maybe, but that's.
Go around and check every door?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I mean, they can go to any door, anywhere in the building and, and at some reason.
The issue is we don't have custodians in the building at all times, which we know that can't happen. It can, it's there, under the current contract.
Well, what about, um, scheduling the activities on Saturdays within an eight-hour timeframe, is that possible? Instead of having two double shifts from seven to three and three to eleven, did we have activities being done ten to six?
You know, with practices, those gyms, both gyms are being used until at least two or three o'clock.
Right.
And then, you know, girls baying on, or boys baying on, come in after that.
They play later.
Yeah. I mean, how practices work.
Well, I'd like to see that stay in, because I think it protects the building and it protects.
It's a trade-off then, if you eliminate the eleven-six-fifty, that's a trade-off.
Eleven-six-fifty?
The valve.
Oh, okay.
H V A C.
What do you think, like?
We can keep it in.
For that very reason, yeah, I've been involved in these things, it's impossible. And it's not, you know, you act like, well, the coach should be responsible, but he's responsible for what's going on in the gym. You can't be two places and, and it's just, uh.
My daughter played fifth and sixth grade basketball last year and when we went to different places, there was typically a security guard there. And you know what? I hate to say it, but for my daughter to play, she had to pay X amount of dollars to play. And that cost took care of at least the home portion of security. Maybe that's what we do, I hate charging our own bantams to do that, but that's a feat.
Well, it's something we can look at in the future.
Yeah.
However, that's, they're not sponsored by the school.
No, but.
Letting them use our facilities.
Right.
There's other facilities we let people use who pay good service, yeah.
But, I mean, for instance, my daughter Mohawk, that Mohawk charged us as the fifth and sixth grade basketball, you gotta pay for a, a, a security, it's gonna be X amount. And we had to every game go over as coaches and, and pay the security guard.
Okay, so that's in for this year?
Well, I said maybe to counterbalance that, like I said, I don't, I don't know if I'm necessarily recommending it, but that might be something that you charge your fifth and sixth grade programs to do that, just pick up the cost.
I actually agree with that.
I agree with it too.
Except that we, other activities that aren't school-sponsored use our facilities and when there's charges, it says.
Yeah.
And they know that, that's why.
Yeah.
You're gonna pay, we're, we're requiring you have security, you have to pay for it.
So then, I, you know, we're gonna have to make every activity that happens on Saturdays in the schools, even if the high school.
Well, a share in cost, yeah. That's what we, yeah, because if we done, you're gonna have someone come in and say, recharge, and that's, you're not charging something else.
Yeah, you'd have to be.
I think the question you're asking, outside versus in-house, that's what you're asking for.
Well, I think in-house, we, yeah, the school's sponsored, we pay for it.
Yes, these are outside organizations.
Yeah, that's the whole thing, yeah.
Okay, so we got two things going on right now, whether to keep it this year or, or to keep it in charge.
It's my recommendation, charge, I'm sorry.
For this year?
I think all the time.
You said, I'm not necessarily saying I recommend this, now you are saying you recommend.
Now, now that we discussed it, yes, I mean, that's what you did.
You tore yourself into a.
The bannan program, I mean, when we had Mr. Bellisimo in here, they had like a hundred and, what was that number, a hundred and ten kids, three hundred and fifty-eight. Something like that, I think, but, I mean, but if, if five bucks a head, you know, and I, my kid played, so.
Probably covered the whole season.
It was really cheap for them to participate, got them a T-shirt, whatever. So really, it's not like an exorbitant cost that would be passed on to the parents. It might be five additional dollars times, you know, a hundred kids and it's paid for, so. I'm not saying I necessarily recommend it, but.
You agree with that.
Must've been a cookie kicking in.
Okay, so you're saying keep a security guard and charge the.
The outside organization.
The outside.
What, give us some examples, what are some of the other outside organizations?
You're a wrestler. You're a wreck wrestler.
Little Angels, they're not Little Angels anymore, but.
Softball?
Yeah.
Little Wolverines.
You'd charge them for the hours they're in the gym or in the.
If they're in here on the weekends and we have to have a security guard.
Here's the amount, we got the base.
We have five home games Sunday.
When they get approved and.
Like, it's two hours, that's before they have to do.
Cheaper than any other place I could use.
I mean, if they have five home games, fifth and sixth grade, we'll say five home games and you need somebody for two or three hours, whatever the time is. Guys come up with the cost, Mr. Roy checks with the security firm, you know, what's fifteen hour, five home games in three hours, what's fifteen hours gonna cost us? That's what you charge the organization.
But what if scheduled for two shifts, though, I think you almost have to.
Yes.
That covers the practices.
How much those gyms are used.
Okay. So it's in, but charge?
Yeah.
That's right, okay. Mr. Roy, you have homework. Um, so what about the funds for the security cameras for Hartman? Ellen, what is that one?
It has a, which you had discussed before, we can go on to the next one.
Five is four.
Externer?
Now Hartman, Hartman's done.
I just split the money up, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
So what's the verdict there with the cameras?
Yeah, I think we can at least cut it in half.
Can you live with that, Alan?
I, I can put up, you know, I can, if you give me a chunk of money, I'll get as many as I can with whatever's there. And we'll split it up however we can do it.
Cut it in half, fifteen thousand?
Make it a what?
That thirty-six.
It was twenty-two, it's thirty-six here.
Well, that includes the thirteen for the security.
Yeah, it was roughly twenty-four, twenty.
We would cut thirty, eleven thousand.
We would cut eleven thousand?
Yes, one half, one half of that money.
Those are exterior interior.
Get whatever you want.
Whatever you need, the eleven thousand dollars or.
I'll get whatever I need. I'll, I'll talk with the principals if there's critical cameras, interior that need.
Right.
And then the rest will go, go exterior.
Are there on any brands that are available for security right now? Because they say that's where the big thing is, where you can get money right now, is for security purposes.
Something we can explore, for sure. A lot, a lot of times you say schools grant you to pay for that, but they're not paying for hardware anymore. They pay for training in school, because some creative things that's like training will last how much.
Now, remember.
So we'll actually.
So you second the move. Okay, so we're good with cutting that in half?
Yeah.
So how much is it now?
Twenty-four.
Twelve thousand?
No, well, the total with the thing would be twenty-four, from thirty-six to twenty-four, right?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. Boys' basketball uniforms, when were they bought last year?
That's, Rich, I don't, I don't have that number.
Duni told me that every uniform that was requested would be in the normal cycle.
She asked, when was the last time basketball was ordered, do you remember that?
I don't know.
I don't remember.
What I'm saying is I, I checked with Duni, he said that all requests were within normal cycles.
So he's just doing repairs, I mean, replacements?
Well, no, when we went through it, we cut those out, we cut all purchasing of, uh, uniforms out in every sport. That's where, you know how the baseball, we talked earlier about baseball number going down to five? A lot of that number, to get it down to five, was known to uniforms. We kept all essential equipment, you know, obviously a bat or, you know, balls or whatever you need, but as far as uniforms, not.
Okay, so you're good dropping this eighteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand, that's the total for the whole athletic budget?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Petrocolo, Mr. Zrona and I made those decisions.
So does that include like the cheerleading uniforms that were on the other?
No, the cheerleading uniforms are different.
Because you're talking individuals of different stature.
Yeah, and cheerleading is an activity, for whatever reason.
I'm just trying to look at what was on that other page.
I said, I don't agree with it. Okay, and eliminate funds for retirement, I'm sorry, containment wall for Hartman, I'm against, against that. I mean, it's working out so well at Northside, I think we should have the same safety for the kids at Hartman.
Well, why not do one, take out the one for Perry and.
That's what I'm saying, I was breaking them down, I, I didn't put them together.
Yeah, but I was inside of Perry last week and he needed.
It's just that, I feel like the thing is with Hartman, the issue is you can walk in and then you can go up the stairs before you go in the office, is that right?
Separate door, yeah.
So, I mean, that's what that wall would build at Hartman, just at Perry. Like, the thing is if they get through those doors, it's their.
It's their doors.
They're, they're in the school. So I, it's either we need to depend on those doors not letting anybody in, or secretary or Perry not letting anybody in that shouldn't be inside the school, but.
Those doors are new doors and they are, they're metal, are they metal? The metal doors are just the little slots and it's not like they can break the glass out like at Hartman.
I think they make these steel doors.
Yeah, yeah.
There's.
They're safe, they're safety doors, whereas, like you said, they can't get in unless they're beaked in, but you never know who has what being concealed.
But there's a camera on the person, secretary can see just like here, who's, who's going in?
But like that kid who did, you know.
And where, where would the wall go? I, where, first of all, where would the wall go at Hartman, is that just straight?
I don't think that's been really decided.
He hasn't decided yet, Hartman or Perry, he said those two would be tough.
And let me tell you, Northside is wonderful and I love it, but once they get to the top, they still, they're still, it's still free.
It's still continuing.
You know what I mean? So it's, it is getting them in one door and they can't go downstairs, so we fixed about half of it, but it's still not a perfect world.
I mean, if you buzz somebody in.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't solve every possible.
No.
We're not buzzing them directly into the office, they're still on the first floor.
So what's, what's everybody's feeling while doing Hartman?
I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, I think that Hartman should be done.
Right. I think we can hold off on Perry.
I agree, especially since we don't know what's going on with Perry.
Right, right.
Okay, Frank, this one's you, severance clause superintendent.
That's part of the contract for vacation days and sick days.
I actually had to add that back in, Captain.
Okay.
I missed that the first time through, those next three line items I missed. And then I guess the textbooks, the quote came in higher than what we anticipated.
Okay.
Sick days. So, so there's vacation sick days.
So we don't need to actually do anything with that, right? Superintendent's?
I need to add it into the budget.
Okay, it needs to be added in.
Number I missed.
Oh, so we don't need to do anything with these last three, right?
No, I mean, I think we already talked about the wrestling coaches and the wrestling summer programs, those were already added. And then the textbooks, I don't really have a choice. I think those are science texts, I'm not mistaken.
Yes, to new clause.
Where's the textbook?
He missed it, he has to add it in.
I would follow him.
Okay, also, my recommendation was, uh, sixty thousand we have for lab box teachers. Put twenty-five thousand for the phone system. For five years, that would pay for all the schools, right, Alan?
Yeah, you could do, I think the, the quote was a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the entire district.
So if we put twenty-five thousand a year, uh, towards that, the thirty-five thousand just put in the general budget?
Um, next year, Mr. Roy, we'll need that sixty for teacher laptops.
Teacher laptops, so there'll be another twenty-five thousand, would have to add next year's budget. The year after, okay.
Okay, Rich.
Well, confused now.
Yeah, I'm a little confused too. So, twenty-five thousand in for a phone purchase.
Yeah.
The remaining funds you take out of the budget, you leave there, I mean.
Wait, are we talking about the sixty-three, one-fifty, the yearly lease?
Yeah.
So twenty-five for the phone system?
Yeah. And don't do the, the laptops next year.
So if we take twenty-five, I'll, we'll have thirty-eight left, what are we gonna do there, thirty-eight?
Well, so I guess I'm trying to understand, is that have to come out of the budget, I mean.
But it'll have to go back in next year.
Take it out for next year, but the year after.
No.
Next year.
We're good this year, but next year.
We're talking fourteen-fifteen.
Yeah, we will have to have laptops that next year.
Which is fifteen, sixteen, not fourteen.
That's fifteen, sixteen. Next year's fourteen-fifteen, we're talking about the fourteen-fifteen.
Next year, we're okay. Then you'll have to make sure that that charter is still there for the following year.
Right.
So then we can have another twenty-five thousand to be adding into the budget.
Another thirty-eight thousand be adding into the budget, fifteen, sixteen, because if you pool the thirty-eight thousand.
Plus the twenty-five for the phone.
That, that would stay in, once that's in, that's in. And again, it's twenty-five, I did talk to the bank, that's, that's a good solid number, but I mean, it could vary. You know, twenty-five, sixteen, twenty-four.
And that's just the two schools, that's Hartman and.
No, I think the one twenty-five is for across the board. That's every school.
That was including Perry, after they just put the funds in at Perry and had all, all.
This is voice over I P.
This is all voice over I P, so, you know. We need to do a little bit of wiring out there, but our guys can do what wiring needs to be done.
Okay, then, paving of Perry. My recommendation was to take it out and patch it.
I mean, with, uh, what Mr. Brazelli and Mr. Cortez said, we got, got a good great deal on, on the paving.
I don't know that that's, that's a part.
That was an all.
Yeah, that was a whole clause, we'd have to check into that and see if it's, uh, presence being raised.
Do we know what it's gonna cost to patch? We have, we don't have a estimate on it either.
It should be a fraction.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, but, uh, patches is gonna be way less.
That's why I thought, uh, leave two thousand in for patching.
Well, as bad as they said it was, shouldn't we leave like four in? Because you're talking cold patch, doesn't cold patch come out pretty easy?
Well, they went cold patching, they patched, they split-patching.
Oh, okay.
They went split-packs.
So you'd have somebody come in and do it, not our. So you'd have somebody come in and do it, not our?
We'd contract it? Yeah, you'd probably have to contract, because they couldn't get, uh, spot mix out there with our, the others there, yeah.
Should we see what the bid came in between patching and, and getting it done?
Could we look for another bid, Mr. Zrona, for maybe?
Yeah, I, yeah, we could. I mean, we'd have to go through the whole process, I wouldn't, Steve got that price.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would have to go through the official process to get pricing in, the specifications and the whole thing, so.
Patching versus paving, so.
Well, no, actually, paving for, paving and patching for patching, I mean, maybe the way the spec would be written is, we'd want a price for.
Either one.
Paving this much square foot and, and or patching.
Right.
Okay, then we have four thousand for the consultant? Okay, well, now I'm confused though, I don't know the, what are we gonna do with the Perry thing? Is that? I think you leave it in then, that's what they're saying.
Leave, what, the seventeen?
That's what you're saying, to their consent.
Right, we're not spending that, that's just.
Yeah.
We're not spending any of that, it's just a number to go by.
Okay, leaving that in, seventeen thousand in?
And then the. If the bid comes back, then we make the decision, we save whatever we want. And if we go to patch and it's four thousand, you know, we've saved that much for, in the budget.
Right.
Then the consultant, that four thousand, that's in the budget, take it out.
What consultant?
We have a consultant that works with the principals on instruction, he does the walkthroughs with them and observations.
They, they've been working with them, they, they're good at what they're doing.
Yeah.
Um, for taking it out?
Yeah.
Everybody else in or out? I wish I'd taken, oh, I do.
We did.
You did a very good job.
Frank, did there be any savings in, um?
Rich, you ever told me yet?
Subcontract psychological testing.
I'm sorry, say.
Any savings in subcontracting, testing?
That's not having the access.
Anytime, I had an independent evaluation done on this student this year, or a parent.
Which you have to add, those costs that were not in.
It cost us about a thousand dollars to have this student tested.
So it's gonna be in net.
How much do the IU, do they still offer that charge?
We have just like a.
They do, but now a lot of those psychologists are gone, because some programs are closed.
There was actually an article in the Tribune Energy yesterday about how districts are having to hire their own psychologists on. Because the IU just aren't, they can't support them, and so they're furloughing their psychs. And districts are having to hire their own. Franklin Regional just hired one, Ten Tractor just hired one, like, it's, it's the way everything's happening.
Even Shenango's hiring their own psych now.
I'm gonna give you your test question. Crown number, I don't give.
Uh, it's about a hundred a year.
A hundred a year.
And that's where?
Hundred and five last year.
Uh, special added through gifted.
Reevals.
Three evals to.
And that's, those are the ones that I physically did something with. That's not including the reevaluations that the teachers do that I review and sign off. So we have three hundred, how many central students?
Two hundred and sixty-seven.
Two sixty-seven. So, all of those kids have reevaluations at least every three years, some have them every two years, some have them more often, we're changing their placements. I have to review every single eval in order to be able to sign off on them, because it's my, my credential online. So I, I physically did a hundred and five evaluations, plus I reviewed all of the teacher ones.
Um, Mr. Zrona, is that five thousand dollars paying in Helling Stadium still in the budget?
It's actually not in the general fund budget, there are funds in the Helling Stadium Fund and/or the Athletic Facility, so it's.
So that'll come out there?
Yeah.
Also, I just had a couple more things. Looking at this, what you gave us, Mr. L, I appreciate you looking that up and getting us this information. But to look, I'm just looking, like I said, for, at the last meeting, looking at the hours, our summer coaches, our summer pay for coaches. And it seems like we're letting our coaches pick and choose how many hours they, they want to put forth. But like every other school, it seems like they have, this is the max amount of hours that you can do, or, and, and they seem like they have fixed rates, like. Laurel, they all get seven hundred dollars, Shenango, they all get twelve sixty, Beer Falls, they all get fifteen hundred. I think, you know, we should, we should limit. Because I.
How much is paid in a year or a year?
The, the way that I did it was, if we limited our coaches for pay at a maximum of a hundred hours. That includes all the coaches that we're paying, football, baseball, basketball, boys and girls, and.
Volleyball and swimming.
And wrestling, and wrestling, and volleyball. We would save, uh, close to thirty-one hundred dollars. If we limited them to a maximum of a hundred hours. And we're still paying them, I have my numbers here somewhere. But, I mean, other schools, as you can see, we just, I don't think we have the money to give these coaches an extra boost of money when they're on top of their contracted head coach salary. As, I mean, and looking at these schools, I mean, Beer Falls, they have a hundred fifty hours max, but I think their sports require a little more.
They're paid less, too.
I mean, I just, you kind of get the gist of what I'm saying. I, I just don't think we're doing anything special here for our coaches to, to say. I'm gonna work a hundred fifty some hours and they're getting eleven fifty on the hour and, you know? And it, and it comes down to, our sports aren't any good here. Past two, three years, I mean, we, what have we done? We haven't made the playoffs in any sport besides wrestling, I think.
Track.
Track, softball, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to make some recommendations, cut some money, but. I, I see that extra pay as kind of a bonus. They are, they, they got the head coach job with that head coach salary. Summer, summer, it's a bonus, we appreciate what they do in the summer, but like I said in the last meeting, that's, that's part of being a head coach. You develop your, your athletes, your team year round. You shouldn't have to have an extra incentive of two thousand or a thousand, two thousand dollars to develop your kids over the summer. That should come with the job. So, I mean, still, giving them a hundred hours at eleven fifty, that's, that's eleven hundred dollars. That extra on top of their head coach salaries, I mean, I don't think, I, I just don't think they should get any more of that, you know, that's just my opinion.
No, legally, we did approve them. That's a solicitor question, Mr. DeCaro. Could you change now, since we already approved them?
Do we approve the elderly break? Did we approve how many hours?
We have to look at the minutes, I think they did, um, you know, we need to throw the, through sport by sport.
I don't know if that's covered by the contract, but let me have it started, yes, potentially we may be able to.
Does this sense please approve the following for summer conditioning right on this? So how could we have approved it already? Why are you admitting this?
We did that last one.
The last meeting.
We did that last one.
I'd have to look at that, there may be an opportunity to do this, since they haven't started.
I mean, has anybody else kind of approved? Is that, I mean, it's thirty-one hundred dollars.
No, I, I think it makes sense, it's universal, it's the same.
We could rescind it, and they have to start, you have to rescind it.
We need to start somewhere.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Matt.
So you're saying the max of a hundred hours?
Yeah, and that would be us, three thousand and fifty-nine dollars.
Right.
Because you have Fodia here, he has, he has twenty-four hours, right?
That sounds good to me.
The other thing I wanted to make the board aware of is that, um, we did talk about wireless upgrades, and I did include that, and that was not taken out. So if you want to include that, it's, it's in there, if you don't want, that's another, I think, twenty thousand or twenty thousand one hundred plus stack. So there's about thirty thousand in the budget still to do a wireless upgrade and provide the switch stacks that are required.
Is that, from what you said at the last meeting, I think those sound like.
They're braces.
No, we need them.
You're gonna date them ahead.
That's for the two, that's for Northside and Hartman.
Right.
What's our final number, what we have to take out?
Uh, it looks like six hundred twenty-nine thousand approximately.
Well, what about, um, also, I, I mentioned the custodial overtime, could we, uh, could you look at what we could do to get the three to eleven shit instead of the eleven to seven? And that'll kind of maybe cover that overtime of them coming in for the basketball games or any other events that happen. I mean, I think we could at least get that cut down to at least half, that's fifteen thousand dollars in savings there.
That would reduce retirement costs and everything too, wouldn't it?
Yes.
So that would be a fifteen thousand minimum.
I mean, I know Debbie wants to hear this, who's in this room, but, uh, an administrative pay freeze would save us twenty-six thousand dollars as well. But, Debbie wants to hear that in here, but I don't know if we're, Liberty could discuss that or make that decision right now, but.
Bring it up.
That's why, that's why I'm bringing it up.
But they've already done that last, was it two years ago?
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, two years.
Last time they did it was a year before the teacher contract.
Right.
It's food for thought, but you all know where we stand too, where school districts stand, so keep in mind as next year comes. You know, it's not that if somebody doesn't want to give a raise, there is no money to give raises, I mean, you see, we're still on a deficit, which I don't know how long.
Or, or even, not, not even a freeze per se, maybe, uh, making, you know, instead of a, what is it, two point five, six percent increase, raise a year. Scale it down to one and a half percent or one point two five percent maybe, I don't know, I, I know our teachers aren't getting more than a percentage raise a year. I mean, maybe our, uh, these are all just.
I think the raise between the teachers and the administrative is pretty much even?
No, I, I look, it's, it's less than one percent the teachers get, as they move up at the steps.
Well, it just depends, people in the lower staff are gonna get the least amount, but you got the lower staff at the bottom, you get.
Average it out, the, the total cost divided by one thirty-two is two five seven after the administrative.
Right, two.
But you're right, some of them have gotten one, but others have gotten one closer to four.
Right.
But that's what the teachers want.
Right, I, that's, that's all.
Yeah, that's what they.
Yeah, I understand that.
They could have given up that for just straight across the board grants.
Right.
I think we have one year left on the administrative compensation plan, so anything to be voluntary on their part.
Okay. Yeah, that's, then we can discuss that next year.
Now, just to be clear, Mrs. Dowey's going full time for twelve months, I think is what it was, that was included?
Most of it was, I'd have to add eight hundred dollars or so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I know where we stand. And getting back to what, um, Mrs. Panzer had started out with, with the cutting of, and, um, I guess it's a secretarial position?
Yeah, but we've given up the ProSoft program.
Okay.
And we haven't made any decision, right, with Kelly Services?
No, we haven't, we actually met with them, it, it's expensive, so I'll do the analysis for the June board meeting. But no, we haven't, we met with them, I don't have any information or analysis at this point, that was yesterday.
So basically, my proposal doesn't work because there's no reduction of work at this point. We've taken all the work freebies out.
So Kelly looks like it's gonna be like an addition to the budget?
Going to be more money. It would be in addition to the, the cost of the soft, but what we need to look at is how many folders we're using and self-work and kind of analyze it based on the number and type of days that we're using. Clarify something too on ProSoft, and Ellen can, I mean, it, all, all the upgrade that ProSoft is, is that it's just gonna be online, pretty much. It's not, I mean, the attendance is gonna be the same, it's, um, it just gives principals opportunities to work on it at home if they want to, schedule wise, um.
It puts grade work.
It gives a grade work for the teacher if we purchase anyhow. So the upgrade to ProSoft, I mean, right now it's just server based, everything's kept here. But this upgrade is that it's now in the cloud, it's in the internet based, and it makes it a little bit, I guess, slicker or easier for principals to access at home. There's gonna be a learning curve involved. As far as like attendance, saving time, I mean, maybe still gonna have to do attendance and run attendance, right? It's all gonna run the same.
A little bit more streamlined, there's a couple of steps that'll be missing, imports and exports.
I don't remember with their presentation being that you can, that it's gonna, that it's, everything's automated, there still has to be people at the controls doing things with it to manipulate it. It's just a little bit, the way it works, the way it looks, it's just, I, it's cloud based. And that, principals, like, when we have to work on the schedule and you want to come in, you have to come in on a weekend or at night, or you don't have to work on a schedule if you have to, there they can work on it at home at night or on a weekend. You know, to do the schedule. So that was one big time saver as far, but it's still, you have to do it, you still have to, it doesn't do the schedule by itself, you still have to manipulate all the numbers and so on.
Since you've all were so kind to come in, are there anything that you guys see and think of in ways, ideas, to assist us with our lovely budget?
We sat for a good two hours last week, and, and we talked at length about a lot of what was, you know, made available to you. I think a lot of what you received tonight is what we discussed last week, as far as significant, I mean, you know, the buck here, buck there. I still haven't, you know, once you guys make the final word, then I'll go back to our departments and, you know, tell them what they have available to order. I mean, we didn't necessarily go through line by, by line in the high school and say, you know, you can't order this, or you can't order that. We, we looked at some of the big chunks for you guys.
I think you guys did a great job.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate you guys. Just be aware also, we are piloting a reading series this year for next year. We haven't had a new reading series since winter.
I think it's thirteen.
It's thirteen years.
Do you have a price tag on this?
Not yet, we, we, we never really know until the end, so we start middling down prices, what's free, what isn't, you know, and start working negotiations. So, we're piloting this coming year with two textbook companies for reading, and it's something that's been needed for a while, so we're at that step. That's gonna be something we're gonna need to discuss also, that's gonna be a big number.
Are we talking like? I, I.
Hundreds.
We're talking like half a million, or are we talking a little less?
Not much, I mean, we're only going K to six right now, but, and then we need to look at seven through twelve, we haven't had a reading series in seven through twelve. Years, years. Math series in years.
And with Common Core, are we, are we looking at different styles, different techniques, or?
See, that's, we haven't looked at math yet, I mean, that's, we thought reading, once the core, PA Core became official. We need to start looking at series that are, you know, uh, not, not, notebook is gonna be, like, they're gonna say they're PA Core, but it's. No, it's not gonna be exact, so, you know, we, we need to look at, you know, scrutinize each one, and, uh, because textbook companies weren't that far along yet. You know, and then we look at E-text, you know, and, so, I just wanted to throw that out there next year too, so.
Also, about the elementary schools, do we, we need, we need head teachers at our, at our buildings, I know it's a three thousand dollar cost to have head teachers. I saw that in the budget, is that, is that a necessity?
Well, for example, today I was at, um, Student Learning Objective Training in IU in Grove City, so that's a mile away. And, um, I, I really do feel for safety sake, somebody, when we come over here for meetings, all of my meetings, I don't have any meetings at Northside. They're all either at Hartman or here or Grove City, so you really do need to have somebody that can step up.
How many days are you away from the building?
Full days, I, I limit it to only things that are required, like we're doing Student Learning Objective Spot Connection, so.
That's.
Necessary, if it isn't, wasn't necessary, we don't go. Meetings are hours, two, three hours.
What is that meeting?
Yeah.
Maybe it's time for the administrators to give up their company cars.
It's about a hundred and fifty.
It's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand miles.
Is that you said?
The band chair.
It's amazing, it, it never.
Because it wasn't on the line item, so it wasn't on, on the form.
So is that in or out, as it stands now?
Yeah, yeah.
The band chairs, they didn't have it, they didn't have it on paper, so we didn't go down and throw it.
Rich, now that that came up, I'm in the Lions Club, and we're having a pig roast, the first football game, and we're raising money for the band. We asked Lee to give us a, a wish list of stuff, and I know everything has to flow through you, he had asked for.
Chairs.
He had, he did, he asked for chairs, and he asked for, or a drum. Now, the drum he asked for, he said there's supposed to be four of them, we have three, but it's six thousand dollars for the one drum. But if we raise the funds, I could bring it up, I mean, we wouldn't be allowed to purchase the chairs as long as we go through the office?
Yeah, what happens is you avoid the taxes and the whole process, I mean, so that's why whenever we have somebody from the outside purchase something, of course, we have them donate the money to us, and we go through the proper procedure to get it in place.
Okay, so if we raise two thousand dollars, we could probably get half the chairs he wanted to get him started.
Sure.
We'll have a meeting next Tuesday, so I'll tell.
Also, I, I've heard a couple of comments from people about the bridge, how it's painted green, like, is there any way, like, how much would that cost to paint it?
Well, I think again, we have paint in the budget already, so if that were something the board wanted to do, we just let Steve Doug.
We got our bridge painted.
Project, and just paint it.
He has painters that do different things during the summer, I think you just put that on his list, and that's a priority.
Well, I know it's kind of like a dangerous position, because you're up eyes, the bridge or whatever, but, I mean, it's, it's green, we're not a green school.
All the, all the windows long are green too.
What's that?
All the, all the other metal windows covered in that side are green too.
Part of that addition, and we talked about, whatever we did the other addition, we should have had that brick and covered up. But that looks awful, if you're coming down from Stiefel, and you see that part of the building, as nice as everything else looks, it looks forward. But it would have been a big, big money.
Can I ask a question, do I have the approval to go ahead with that early adopters program? Because I have a week of school to get the form out to the teachers.
Yeah, we said we're okay with that, right?
Okay, all right, so I can get it out tomorrow morning and we're good with, okay.
I'm still not happy with this one. Things that I brought up, where something was just brought up tonight, we talked about it both of us for at least four weeks. Find that unacceptable, we're not prepared to go with one of them right now, raise taxes and take six hundred thousand dollars in the fund balance. I just remembered the first year I was on the board, that's what we did for like two years. Until it was down to almost nothing, I don't know what it took to get it to where it's at right now. We're heading down the road to like, except next year, we're gonna be going through the same thing again. We're gonna take money from the fund balance, and have to raise taxes, which I voted for five tax increases, but each time we did it, I felt confident that we did everything we could, and we did that as a last resort, I don't feel that way now.
What would you say?
We're heading down the road to financial ruin. Tough choices that have to be made, they're not, and in the past, the board has been here, been through an awful lot together. Fired coaches, fired employees, you've had a meeting with two hundred people saying you can't do this, can't clip, and you've always done it. I just find it really surprising facing something this serious, that I don't see that same boldness and courage.
What are you proposing?
Two things that I suggested, just one.
Well, is that an attack to Beaver County?
And closing Perry, these aren't things we just brought up tonight, we talked about them for a while, about several times, to make sure these things were in place, because a day is coming when we can do it, and the day is here and we're not ready. It's my opinion.
What do we need to do to get the VOTEC, VOTEC in place?
Well, VOTEC has to be in agreement with us coming at Beaver, and VOTEC and Newcastle, they need to be notified. And then, like Kirk said, we have to have the staffing in place to handle the kids academically.
And what's the savings to switch? We don't have an exact number.
Eleven thousand a year for a hundred students, or sixty students at eight thousand a year. There's that, second math guy stuff. Uh, uh, there's a lot of things involved, and that's why I'm just very disappointed, we're disappointed, we don't have any answers.
Yeah, what are you saying, there's no way for us to do it for the?
I would say that you don't wait for us to do it.
You think this year, there's enough time?
We may really have to hustle, but it's been my experience that unless someone's really put to the fire, good example. Does anybody in this room didn't know we had a budget crisis this year? We had first budget meeting, we come back to this one, the administrators have a special meeting, and oh, we found another three, why didn't we do that the first time? I'm just being honest there, I mean, obviously, that's my whole point, all of a sudden, we're gonna eliminate administrator, and guess what? Kind of eliminate the athletic director, all of a sudden, the administration has found another three hundred thousand dollars.
I, I agree with you.
Again, that's my opinion, but I'm one, but somebody else says, we're running out of other people's money, we just keep throwing it out.
I could check with Beaver County, who are in technical center, I don't think they have a problem dating us.
Well, weren't they supposed to get that before?
They have to go through a vote, it'll be fifteen to one. Sixteen schools there, and that's that process, we have another top one county that will legally pay us.
Now, you're saying fifteen to one, you're saying fifteen schools will be for it, and one school will be against it?
That would be my guess.
What would that do with busing? Does that create more busing?
Well, you'd have a, a lap, there'll be transition period. I assume the kids are there at the Lawrence County VOTEC, you'd want to finish there.
Yeah, that's the whole thing, if we did it right now, for instance, we have kids who are gonna be seniors next year, just being, students are first to hand. We're gonna let them finish next year at Lawrence County, send our new ones.
What we would do then, I think what we would do is not send the sophomores next year to Lawrence County.
Right.
This way.
Is, is that up to us to make that an option for tenth graders to go, or is that just what everybody does? Is that like what Newcastle would?
Yeah.
They sent.
Not Lawrence County's.
That's what.
Lawrence County's a three-year program, Beaver County's a two-year.
Right, but under the articles, we don't have to send anybody. So, like, we talk, we could avoid one of the battles of just saying, we're not withdrawing, we'll pay our share of the capital cost, but we're not gonna send any students.
Right.
We, we're not required to send a minimum number of students.
So can we?
Our capital cost, based on our average attendance per day.
It's probably eleven thousand dollars a year.
Well, the capital costs are, my, my, it's unhappy.
Would save, would save eleven thousand times probably twenty-five, twenty-six, yeah.
Sophomores.
Yeah.
So.
Well, you could send five thousand lots.
Right. I mean, I mean, we just gotta.
I mean, I realize this is a big deal, I mean, but.
This is something, this is something you really need to know.
Yeah, I mean, as far as special ed students, um, I have two, four, six, eight incoming tenth graders, and in a week and a half, I'm doing my E.P. So once I sign those NORPs, I am then legally bound to send those kids there. I can't say, oh, my board decided, no, sorry, I can't physically do that, so.
VOTEC, is that where you're trying?
Right.
That would require the transition year.
So that's my tenth graders, I only have one eleventh grader, then I have two, four, six, seven, twelfth graders. So, I mean, I'm just saying, as part of special ed, I, I need the board to understand that something's. There's, there's a process.
I know, but what I'm saying is, this should have been our transition year, we do this next year, that's a transition year. We still have a big gap in our butt, that, that's my whole point. I thought we were right ahead of this.
I think we started, we started the applications for VOTEC, and like the application process for our tenth graders.
January.
January, and so, and I mean, so we have to know if that's the change, and we can't have the kids thinking they're going there and then.
No, that's just special ed, right?
I mean, as far as special education students, yes.
We'll have between fifteen and twenty total students, including the.
Separate special education.
But all of them start applying in January.
Correct. I think what the board would have to do is, they have to get a resolution saying that they, effective with whatever year, following year, we want to transition to Beaver County. Yeah, again, I think there's a distinction, only not completely, or just not sending students. There's, there's a difference.
Like the number one loophole, like, plus practical thing, how the students come in, I'm aware of all that, we, we should, I'm just disappointed we don't have that.
So we're saying that we need to.
Bringing it up right now, now we're finding out, well, we got, you understand what I'm saying?
I would have said that.
No, we're sending, um, after, and then there'll be eighteen.
Eighteen.
There'll be eighteen total there next year.
So if you bring, they go to Beaver County, say there's eighteen at Beaver County.
They have to.
They're coming back, you can only put how many on a caseload?
Well, I, I can, caseload wise, I can do it, it's a matter of making sure that we can support them in class.
Yeah, we probably, we work out and hire aides and another learning support teacher. Plus the content teachers.
Right. Like you said, it, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a transition, it's, it's, this all can happen.
This is something we're gonna have to look into for next year and be proactive, and like you said, make some serious decisions on where we're heading.
I think, you know, we can force some issues, I really believe we can.
Specifics, are you, are you thinking of one specifically?
No, I'm just saying the issues that we've been discussing.
You want us to start planning for closing Perry next year then?
I have to do, I'm gonna have to do a survey if I can take both people, sixth grade and VOTEC, I mean, that's. To do both of them. I, I don't know if I can do both, take sixth grade and VOTEC.
And wasn't that the initial issue for?
Well, I would think it would be K one, two, and three, four, five, and Hartman.
Busted at the seams. We, yeah, the Weaver.
What was it, three, four, and five at Hartman?
It really has to be a test.
I don't, I don't have that answer.
It's, I mean.
You have to get rid of the, the, you have to get rid of the. Multi-handicapped, yeah.
Kindergarten counts classes, so you have.
Free days.
You relax. It just takes a.
I still, I still don't agree that it's the best thing for the kids to put sixth grade at the high school. I mean, that's something we have to consider, these are, these are young kids that you're now intermixing with seniors and juniors and.
The other thing with the space in the elementary buildings is, I mean, I know for a fact, because that's, when I go to the elementary building, I don't have a place there, so I'm constantly trying to find a place, and so is Leslie, because we're doing meetings, I'm trying to test, and I can tell you right now, there's no space in any of the buildings. At Perry, I've been testing in the hallway sometimes, like, we've done meetings in the library, like confidential meetings that really shouldn't be happening in the library. And that's without closing a building, and that's, you know.
That's gonna increase, uh, class size too, right? Closing buildings is gonna increase, or have, what, thirty kids on class, maybe?
No, I think. You said same. We have, the issue was.
Yeah, I think she had one point with certifications as well, was that not being a, I thought initially, Mr. Ollie, that was one of our issues that we had discussed was, can those certifications be?
Usually.
At this level? At the high school level?
I couldn't use, as, as somebody certified K through six to teach anything but that sixth grade class.
That'd have to be self-dedicated.
So you think it was just a certification?
I mean, when we closed Walnut Ridge, there was, I believe, seven retirees that we didn't replace, there's your savings. It's not necessarily just closing the building, it was not replacing the retirees. You close Perry.
We won't get, I understand.
Yeah, that, that saves savings.
We closed Walnut Ridge, we saved like half.
Yeah, right.
Well, I said conservatively around two hundred thousand.
I can understand.
I understand.
Mostly support staff.
And one of the reasons we haven't closed Perry already is that reason.
Yeah.
Now, this is where we're at. It's not, I'm not happy with putting all students in like a high school building either, but I don't have too many other options. The options will, will end up being, we'll be sending them somewhere else. This is what the governor's option was with Chester, up, up on, Chester, up on School District, ran out of money.
Yeah, are you saying?
Yeah. Local H R S set up seven charges.
I'm just saying, speaking from an elementary parent, for, as an elementary parent, I do not be comfortable at all having a sixth grader up at high school. I don't, I don't, I just.
I, I understand that, I'm, yeah, I'm not.
I mean, we have to still do what's best for the kids, and I do not see where that is best for the kids. I mean, I think everybody here thinks the same as I do, is the ideal situation would be having middle school, so, I mean, you're, you're separating. There, that's, there's a big difference between a sixth grader and a twelfth grader.
Yeah, unfortunately, that should have been thought about years ago, for the restructuring of our elementary school.
When we built Hartman, we wanted that third floor. Called Allen Stadium.
I never made that connection, you're right.
That was the decision, that's true. We even had permission from the state to build a bridge from Hartman to Lincoln.
Really?
To board it at that time, turn it down.
It would make so much sense.
Ten years from now, people are looking and wondering why we're doing this, you know, whatever we're doing.
I wondered when Hartman was built, so close to Lincoln, why there was not a, a connection bridge.
So, so the floor would have been on, that would have been the connection.
I mean, um, what about, we're just completely off the wall, I know, I understand, there's been discussions about merging schools, right?
Yeah, we thought, we. Some board members went out there a couple times.
Went there, we went Riverside twice, they don't entertain it one day.
I am of the opinion that we continue to ask, that hasn't been, that conception of board, and like the answers we got, that I, my personal opinion is, we should continue to ask. Doesn't hurt me whatever, whatever name they want to call it.
We're just passing through their kinds of laws, you know.
Yeah, well, you have to understand, I, the person that's president of the school board at Riverside, he's a New Brighton native, and his. What's that name? I, I understand. He's adamant on sending the students to either Riverside or New Brighton or Beaver Falls.
Or that would not.
I'm more than willing for Greg to keep asking.
I mean, is there any other?
We're second class, no.
There's not enough close, there's no more schools close enough to the verge, or are there?
Oh, it's possible, I, I wouldn't rule it out. The problem is, is these two school districts are in the same community.
Right. Yeah, what's the difference, it's just, they're in Beaver County, we're in Lawrence County.
Four of us are in Beaver County, you know.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it, it shouldn't be that big of a deal, it's just.
There are school districts.
Riverside, we're out of.
There's school districts that are different counties. Yeah, we're on probably half a dozen.
It was a logical decision.
They believe we agree.
Well, no, it's just that their opinion was they, it wasn't necessary. Keep asking, not those every year.
Because, I mean, I, I don't know how many, what their facilities are like out there, but, I mean, we could.
They're no better than ours, and they're no worse.
Right, I mean, it's.
We're so, we're just so identical, it's.
We're right next to each other, I mean, we have kids that are literally three or four blocks away from Riverside, and they come down, when there's kids that live a couple blocks away from this, this school, and they go, and they, you know, and they go to Riverside, it's just.
Well, the thing is, once all the kids graduate, you know, you have to find out, you'll find out, people you were rivals with your whole life, you're in the big present.
You know, Andrew.
It's not a big, yeah.
Most of the people at Riverside, like they all. That's the big problem.
Yeah, you're right.
One time, yeah. That would solve a lot of problems for most of us, our students.
It'd help, but, I mean, like you said, they're not even almost interested.
The two groups that would went out the most would be the students and the tax makers.
Right.
Probably somewhere along their tax rate.
Uh, I would think most of the people who live out there now, their tax would, would get down.
Yes. What's their, uh, millipede, they're now sixty bills?
Maybe it's had another increase.
That's why, it's like Ellen.
This already started for a while, though.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's like everybody else, yeah. The, the state actually uses a formula for them because, uh, like Wilmington, part of New Wilmington is a merciful county.
Right.
And they have a formula to reconcile the tax rates. Those other school districts and multi-counties, that's what they do. Again, that isn't something that's gonna happen this year. I'm optimistic. It could happen next year.
It's a big could.
Riverside doesn't have a tax increase issue, do they?
I don't know.
I don't hear of it, I don't know.
I don't know. Our, uh, local media is not, uh, kind of hitting this on the board, so...
Uh, y'all there?
If we have anything else you wanna add, uh, we can, uh... In this meeting, if we have nothing else, we, uh, have any, uh, comments, thoughts?
Well, I would like self to hear everybody's opinion on the band getting a, a assistant in there for sixteen hours.
I'm against it.
Who you want, Fred? Athletic director? I'm, 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 I can't support that.
No, I don't agree with that.
My opinion, I'll be mad.
I think we need to reduce staff, not gain it. Gain another, but an increase in, in the kids.
There was some more, if we're gonna add, I would think there was somewhere an academic one.
Honestly, if there's a way to change and get one of the music teachers to assist him from up here. Change, like they said, instead of making music, set five days a week, make it three and two. That would free up one of the teachers and give him assistance that he might need. But I'm definitely against, I know, but I'm definitely against...
I'm just laughing because that one teacher is pretty helpful. And we're gonna hear from that side.
I'm totally against bringing in more staff on. I think we need to reduce staff, not raise it.
I agree. I, I, I can't believe the numbers.
But they're there. You can see the kids.
I, I don't believe.
There's a, there's a concert this week. Go. You'll see them on stage. They don't fit on the stage. They don't. I'm, I'm not lying to you, Mr. Carter. They're there. There is a hundred kids. What, Hartman stage? Uh, no, the high school stage. It's up here. They, they, they overflow. And you can see the program. I don't know if I still have the program. You can count the kids. There's ninety-eight kids in the, the elementary program from the last one.
Well, I mean, I, I think what Mr. Leach said, uh, if we go back to our curriculum in making band, choir, or general music a requirement for, is this one or two?
I'll bring it to you.
Seventh and eighth grade.
I mean, if we could make it a semester requirement, I mean, and then, and then, like you said, free up one of the other, one of the choir, we have two choir teachers, right? And instead of making seventh and eighth grade, 'cause I, 'cause I know when I was seventh or eighth grade, I, I had to take those classes, and I had to take those classes. The only thing I wanted to go into the choir is sing, because I'm not a singer. That's just the point of it works. So, instead of making our curriculum, making them have to take a seventh and eighth grade music class, maybe just seventh grade, maybe just every other day for one year, or... And then, like you said, that'll relieve some of the pressures off of those two choir teachers, and maybe we can get one of them who, who knows, that, that can get those sixty hours or whatever, you know, things like that.
It's possible. I think that's, the administration should be able to make that decision.
I know.
Whether they need to do that, I think they could make that one.
The Fab Lab.
I think we have to tell them to do that.
Coming in, that would change the scheduling.
It's gonna have to.
Okay.
There's no room in the end.
Okay, so when, when are we gonna know? Because if this is gonna go into play for next year, that's something that's gonna mess with all of the scheduling that's done thus far, correct? And we still, we're working it.
We're there. We're there. They're coming out to measure next week.
So, they are definitely coming in?
They're, they're coming to measure the rooms, looking what we need. They've gone to two funders, one's the Pittsburgh Foundation. They've gone to another separate fundraiser, the Bay Area. Well, they're interested in working with us. We can get the contracts together, get everything signed. It's an eighty-nine thousand dollar investment to get the lab up and running. Honestly, you could do it for thirty-seven thousand dollars to get the lab up and running.
That's all.
That's all.
But what about the teachers?
And then the teacher contract to, to, for donation, to do for an, like an outside contractor, to bring somebody in that we would work through with funding to pay, but just to run the program until we've been set up and running, that we can replace with our teachers.
Are you planning on using the old metal now?
Um, we've got two options. We've got the old metal, metal shop, and we've got, uh, the old ceramics.
That's a big room.
Both are nice spaces. Both would work very well. The footprint for a Fab Lab can be like ten by sixteen. It, it just depends on, the, the machines are becoming more and more compact, so... I, I'm busting my tail, man. I want you to get that.
I know you are.
Busting my tail. We're gonna make it happen, so.
So, then, we should be expecting this?
That's what I'm expecting, yes.
For two thousand fifteen, fifteen, twenty years?
Well, you know, the way, the way, yes, the way I look at it is, wouldn't it be nice for our students that don't wanna take music and choir? To have an engineering and architectural option that's sitting right down in our basement?
Right.
Which may alleviate some kids that wanna go into the tech.
Exactly.
So, it, it all plays in quite nicely, but I'm busting my tail on this. I'm, I'm typing stuff at night. I'm calling people at night. We're, we're working hard on it.
It is appreciated.
We're, we're working on it.
So, then, do we need to make this move with the choir?
If, if this comes through, um, the way I visualize it working next school year is, we introduce it the first semester at the middle school level. Where letter might be going home to parents, asking for volunteers, student volunteers that wanna go in there, rearrange the schedules that way the first semester. Second semester, then offering it as a high school elective as well. Maintaining the, the middle school, we started the first semester, as well, as well as high school electives. To do both of those right off the get-go, I'm just a little weary that it's gonna be ready to go August, when we start August length or whatever that date is. So, Mr. Soich and I talked about it. I'm just visualizing the first semester, introing it at the middle school level.
If I'm middle school, you mean?
Seven, seven, maybe Mr. Keely still, stealing a period or two here and there when he can fit, see fit. And then, uh, really, once that gets going, second semester, seven, two, twelve. And then, the same thing we did with ceramics this year, we didn't replace ceramics teacher a day before school started. You offer another class, this period, this period, and this period, and you give students five to ten days to readjust their schedule. But yeah, something's gonna have to be done at the, uh, at the middle school level. It's not an easy deal.
So, is now the time to do that?
No, I have, I have preparations. I just, I have what it said, I have our schedule the way it sits right now. I don't wanna make anything drastic until we know for sure it isn't gonna fly.
Yeah, but one way or another, I mean, whether that happens or not, we're thinking that by changing the choir from every day, that it would alleviate some strains elsewhere, so... I mean, is it wise to go ahead and do that regardless?
I think we'd have to look at certifications, to be honest with you. Um, the two choir teachers we have now, I'm not sure if they're instrumental.
So, Miss Menanski is.
Yes.
And she could take on the, the, um...
That would be a move then, in the district, where somebody here to high school would be taking what Miss Menanski does in the elementary, and then possibly bringing her up here. That's something that Mrs. Gibson, Mr. Keely, myself, would all have to get together. And that's just not me. That's, that's everybody.
Oh, we have full confidence when they come.
Play them cookies.
Patricia cookies.
Hopefully they weren't placed with them.
I have that now with my reading and math. Pretty much.
Would you go to our band?
I don't think, no. No, I, I have that set up now for reading and math. I'd like to keep it that way, 'cause obviously those are the tested areas. I wouldn't wanna monkey around with, uh, with, uh, social studies or anything like that. Yeah, you'd have to hire staff, 'cause if you go back to when we did that, that's how I was originally hired, as a teacher. You had to add, uh, some social studies and some English on when you went to...
Yeah, yeah.
George. Were you looking at the five thousand dollars budget for psychological? That's for her testing. All of the test kits that we use to test students, the Woodcock Johnson, the WIS, all of those are all being updated. So, we're looking at over the next two years, about ten thousand dollars worth of testing, because everything's being updated. So, that's why that's so high. Normally, it's about two thousand dollars. And I apologize, she was telling me about a kid.
I, I would really like to know if it's a consensus that Mr. Keely, Mrs. Gibson, and I are supposed to make these changes. I'd like to know that.
Well, choir's not a, um, music is not a, uh, productive for graduation, and I'm okay with it.
I just don't see why we have to, why we require our students to take two years of, of music if they don't...
They don't want it.
I mean, I, I can understand a year. I can understand a semester. I can understand every other day, but two years of music?
Well, for their program, a semester wouldn't work because of the, the way they do the Christmas and the spring concerts. They would need all that prep time.
Or half the students do the spring concert and half the students do the Christmas concert.
Right. I mean, now I'd be option to take it if they wanted to, but it's just not a pre-rep, right? But now it is a whole year, whereas then it would become just an elective.
Could be.
I, I don't see how that would even work. I mean, it, it could, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, you said you would have to explore.
Explore, right, that's what we said.
Well, I'm all in favor. We should explore it and see if we can pull it off or not. All right.
I'm with Mike.
I think we had, uh... Consensus with that, Mr. Leach, that we could have that out.
We're really, uh... The whole thing was started because of one person. You know, are there other options available?
Meaning?
Other than music, of course. The kids don't have to have it.
Right.
Right?
I'm understanding the question.
Is there something else that we can offer the kids?
Well, that's...
You know, the Fab Lab.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna be part of the...
But you're not gonna be able to take all those kids.
Well, right now, you have to understand, seventh grade, I've decreased the other rotations. We, we used to have this. We used to have in seventh grade, so much time for a cooking class, so much time for an art class, so much time for a shop class, so much time for a computer tech class. Same thing in eighth grade. I'm down to this as far as rotations go. In seventh grade, opposite of, they take P E for a semester. For nine weeks, they take their computer class. For nine weeks, they take their art class. In eighth grade, they have math for a period and a half, right? Opposite of that math, second period, every other day, for a semester, they have their cooking class and their technology downstairs, the old shop classes. So, you went from eight rotations in two years to four. So, we're down to the bare minimum rotation. Now, what does that mean? Next year's eighth graders, a large class, that shop class rotation, you're looking at twenty-two kids in there. It's not a safe environment. So, I could create more sections possibly. You know, if, if kids aren't required or put choir in as a rotation to give them more time. I mean, those are things that, I mean, the schedule's done, but I'll have to readjust it, really. I mean, I mean, not that it makes a difference. We bump, we do a bump-up day, last day of school, where kids go through their next year's schedule. They could go through their next year's schedule, and it'll all be changed come June, so, I mean, that would be pretty much meaningless, but if that's what we wanna do, that's what we wanna do.
Well, we'll be doing that with Fab Lab coming into play.
Possibly.
This is a great thing for our school. I just think this is wonderful. This is gonna be a wonderful program.
It's, it's strong. I mean, what we're looking at, for the sequence of courses that can lie out from it, it's, I mean, we have to do it. Just let's come back down to... And like I said, I, as a kid, I don't think I'd, I was, I wouldn't be a choir guy or a music guy, but I would go down to a Fab Lab and build and construct and do. I think that space, you know, like I said, I'd beg, borrow, you know, whatever I can do. If it's thirty-seven dollars, thirty-seven dollars and get us off and running, I know I can get a local person to work with me for that amount of money, so...
Kathy, my kid's going into seventh grade, and I guarantee, I mean...
Oh, Mike's gonna give it to you.
Him going to choir or whatever, it'd be a nightmare. He would much rather do something like that, something that he could have been...
It's, it's, it's a really nice program, so it's just getting all the funding back in and trying to make everything flow. That's, that's the hard part. That's what we struggle with right now. And I still have the big grant out there, so, you know, we can still get that big kick in the tail, but that would be ideal. I'm planning for ideal. I think anybody can plan for ideal at this point, so...
The fact that there's something good out there is a good thing.
It is.
Yeah, hope.
Yes.
Okay, but, uh, nothing else to add? Uh, need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Kathy second, and I, meeting adjourned.
Oh, really? Oh, okay, there you go.
Yeah, so she said...
I mean, I, I still walk around, I still watch.